Good afternoon. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father God, we come to you this evening and once again, Lord, we ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your grace and mercy. Father, here we tackle another fiscal year budget and, Lord, we ask that you keep your hand over every decision that is made, that you protect us from any type of ill will, from anyone that is trying to attack us. Father, help us to promote this city, to grow it in your name, and that all be done, that you be glorified in all that is done by this staff and this council. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now move to citizen comments. At this time, comments we take in from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda, all comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on my citizen comment sheet. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, we will move on to the budget workshop and that will be discussed, proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. Mr. Coombs.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everybody else. Hey, so we're here again, and again, this is a workshop, and again, last week, we gave you the proposed budget, so everything we're going to talk about tonight is in that proposed budget. Just going to hit the highlights. Obviously, you can look through there, there are thousands or tens of thousands of numbers and line items and various funds. If you have questions about those, please let us know. Cheryl, the department head, and I will try to answer those for you, but tonight is the highlights of what's going on in there, and if I am not including something that you want to know about, please let us know. And so with that, the first part was kind of a review of some of the things that we have talked about in the past, about things in general, then we'll kind of get into the budget itself, mainly the general fund and the water and sewer fund. So again, you know, the proposed budget is October 1st through September 30th of each year, and the budget composed of revenues, expenditures, and reserves. And for our general fund, I do, the reason I'm pulling this out, that pie graph, the reason I want to point out, one, is every year, our industrial district contract sets thirty-eight percent of the revenue towards our general fund, so we really appreciate our IDC partners. The City of Orange would not be what it is without our IDC partners. The second thing I want to point out is, if you notice the slice that says sales tax at fourteen percent, the slice that says property tax at thirty-two percent, if we continue and encourage people to buy Orange, especially the stuff that we are sales tax eligible, and we can grow the sales tax, then we can reduce those other parts. So moving on, again, we've talked about this before, but again, the appraisal district sets the values, the appraised values. They do not set the tax rate. They set the appraisal values for the property for the City of Orange and a bunch of other entities, every public entity in Orange that has property tax, such as these folks, they set the rate, they set the appraised value, and those individual boards set their tax rate. So again, City of Orange has multiple school districts, and so they all have their own taxing, tax rate, and so just a homeowner, and either if you live in the West Orange Cove or the LCM School District, that's your combined for 2022. Again, this is stuff that I got off the Orange County Appraisal District website, so this isn't any secret numbers, these are all public for everybody. So let's talk about the City of Orange. And I will tell you, as y'all know, I usually don't have to talk the whole thirty or forty minutes, so feel free to interrupt, or if I need some water or anything like that, I'm going to do it. But, you know, we all say taxes are too high. I say taxes are too high. I like to keep my money, but when people complain how much they have to give, whether that's as part of their escrow into their mortgage note, or if they pay in January, so all at one time, you know, they're like, I paid thousands of dollars, and that is not, not to the city, they don't pay to the city. The average taxable value of a home in Orange for this year, fiscal year 2023, is going to be a hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Yes, that is up from a hundred and five, eight sixty-three from fiscal year 2020. So if you think about all the cool things that are coming to Orange, all the things we try to do as a city, like clean it up, provide better police, provide, you know, fire, all those things, we're trying to increase our appraised value, but we drive around and we see all these things coming to Orange, so that drives property values up, taxable home values. Again, the current year, twenty-two, our tax rate is point eight zero five nine, and so a average home owner in the City of Orange is going to pay eight hundred fifty-three dollars to the City of Orange. I get it, you got to pay a lot to the school district and to the county and all that, but the City of Orange, eight fifty-three, so currently, that's seventy-one bucks a month. Now, what's in the budget, the proposed budget, the tax rate of seven eighty-three, so the tax rate is going down, the city taxes are going up nine oh six. They're not going up to a total of nine hundred and six, that same kind of average. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, I believe it is, they have a consumer price index calculator. Now, there's different ways to calculate it, but again, I just go consumer price index calculator, they put this, they have this little calculator, like a hundred, I put eight fifty-three in July of 2022, and so what does that come out to be in July 2023? I'm sorry, 2021 to 2022, so in a year, eight fifty-three to try to say it's the same buying power from eight fifty-three, it's more than nine oh six. And again, did that same little thing. For a hundred bucks, your buying power on a hundred bucks last summer, it's about a hundred and eight dollars this summer. Now again, different things go up, different amounts, so try to say what needs to go up where, that's a challenge. But again, back to your average taxable home owner in the City of Orange will pay the City of Orange seventy-five dollars and fifty cents a month. Again, I will suggest if I take Jill out on date night to T O Y N E D S on Friday night, it's going to be seventy-five bucks or more, so. Again, think of all the things that are more than that. What does somebody get for all their tax dollars to the City of Orange? We've got a lot of different departments. I will say sanitation, water and sewer, those are enterprise funds, so they have their own separate revenue stream, but I did want to just kind of put them in there to see what we get from the City of Orange. And we've seen some of these before, so I won't go too slow, kind of pick it up, but again, police department, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-six days a year on the leap year. But anyway, is that worth seventy-five bucks? Fire department? Library? We got a cool library, and again, I'm kind of going through these, we've seen these for the last couple of years. Now, the water and sewer fund, that is not general fund, they don't use property tax, they only use for their, we only get revenue for the water and sewer for what we charge, but again, they got a lot of stuff going on there, and you know that, you passed all these different contracts and those kind of things to try to improve this. And again, the sanitation, street sweeper, once a month, you put your debris out there, boom, they'll pick it up, grab a truck. Okay, so that, I know, again, that's kind of a review, but you, anybody have any questions about that? Questions, comments, concerns?
The biggest thing I know for the public, even though there's, we have one person here, thank you, Ms. Devon, but it's just, you know, right now, they can see a lot of us, we've got a lot of work that the city's doing with the water and sewers, and they may not understand when they see that our funds, that thirteen million dollars is going towards that, but they, if we, whenever we do get to push this out, one of the things I want to reiterate to the public is, we're dealing with pipes and sewer and stuff that's fifty, sixty, maybe seventy years old or more.
Eighty, yeah.
Right? I know Mr. Ingram's phone probably dies every twenty minutes from me blowing up, but I do appreciate all that you're doing, because I saw where you guys had to dig up, the driveways on, can't remember the name, right on my house.
Is it Burg?
Yeah, and I was like, man, once again, that's that same problem we had before.
And we'll talk about water and sewer here in a little bit, a little bit more, but yes. So now we're going to get into the proposed budget for 2023, and again, October 1st through September 30th, and this is all in there, so it's all in there. And keep in mind, as we go through this, and if you have something in the evening, this, from here on out, well, last week, actually, when we gave you the proposed budget, if there is something you see that you want out or add into it, staff, Cheryl, or I, we can't do that, you have to do it as a council, so just keep that in mind. But anyway, the budget, is it an exact science? Certainly not. We're getting together, kind of projecting what's coming up, you know, we look at what, how it's been going the last couple of years, you know, all those things, throw darts at a dartboard, hope we hit it right, but all those fun things that we try to get to that budget and say, this is what, this is how much we're getting in, this is how much we think all these projects are going to cost and moving forward. So again, we'll talk about the general fund a little bit, because, you know, the general fund's the biggest fund we have, and I'll say it's, we have the most flexibility in how we can spend it. So again, there's those numbers, again, we saw that pie chart earlier, but that big number from our additional, industrial district contracts, the, you know, those IDCs are based on our tax rate, ninety-three percent of our tax rate, they pay on their appraised value, and industrial values are, they have a different timeline to appeal than what we do, say, as a residential property owner. So while that is very, that's very strong for this year, we're pleasantly surprised on their appraised values, just keep in mind, as we go along in the year, they could appeal those, and as we have done in the past two or three years, we've had to actually give some money back to them. Yes, so anyway, and again, there's a pie chart on expenditures, you know, sixty-three percent, I've said this before, may sound like a lot for personnel, some places, you know, cities that's closer to seventy-five, if you look at a school district, I would say that, that pie chart for that personnel, that's going to be eighty, ninety percent, because that's what they do, it's all people. And again, we need people, we provide services, we can't provide services if we don't have people. And again, there that is in just numbers. So, here we go. What is 2023 holding? Magic ball, what, you know, we all got thoughts, we all got opinions, what's going on, some of them are going to be right, some of them are going to be wrong, but the one, you know, if we recall, a year or two ago, Guy Goodson said, you know, referred to an industrial project that may or may not come to our area as Godzilla. We all drive down Highway eighty-seven towards Bridge City, you know, we can't just act like it's not coming. They, Sheriff Von Phillips, that lady was here a meeting or two ago, remember, she said, oh, announcement's coming, you know, the last quarter of this year. Well, they've been saying that for a couple of years, and they may announce, they may not, but a few months ago, back in the spring, late winter, the department heads and I had a meeting, we said, okay, look, we all see it, we can still be here this time next year saying, ah, we're going to, you know, we're still considering, we don't know yet, but something is going on, we can't put our heads in the sand, so I said, what, what do we need? Of course, everybody was saying the same things, like, we need good people to work at our city to provide services for people. You know, because when this comes, a couple of y'all have said it, even two or three years ago, when they start building that, when they start building all these residential constructions, when they build all these other industrial expansions throughout southeast Texas, southwest Louisiana, it's going to be a challenge to keep and hire and keep good employees. Now, somebody may say, you know, we don't know if that's coming or not, like, you're right, we don't. We do know this, today, happening in Orange, we have developers who have plans to build four hundred sixty-five new homes. Now, you know, Austin or Houston, it may not be big numbers for them, but that's big numbers for us, and so, you know, that could easily be a thousand new people. That's not going to happen overnight, I get it, but it's coming, we drive around, that is coming right now. Also, economic development, these are things that are, that are either underway, going, or happening right now, that's just some of them, and there's, again, I mentioned this before, you know, Jay keeps a list of like, it seems like two dozen projects, depending when you ask him, not going to catch them all, but stuff is coming now, not, not, well, in two years, it's now, so we need to be ready now, I don't want, you know, one of the things I'm looking at this budget is, well, if it does come, you know, in two years, we'll have to do some things, it's like, no, we need to get ahead of that. So first of all, we'll go to our capital outlay. Not going to read them all, but I will tell you, again, all of this is in the budget. Again, the fifty radios for police, that's a big number, nine radios for fire, those are big numbers, it's in the budget, it's a balanced budget, it's in there. I will caution anybody who looks at the street and drainage stuff, West Alley Pain, that's not the whole section of the road, and Mike Markentel and James Ingram and I, we kind of discuss, we don't want to get, we have concerns about when they're going to finish building out there, because they're going to build those homes in phases, and this is more of the eastern side, if you will, from the Fox Run Apartments to the second, the most western speed hump, that's that section in there, but we don't want to build it and they keep running trucks up and down it. So again, the timing of that is still under some discussion, and obviously, Sixth Street, that's just a small little section, and that right by that lift station is a small section. Again, we'd like to point out, we still want to do that parking lot at Lions Den Park, and the Cove Rec Area, twenty-five thousand, if you recall, Dow came to us last year and said they'd be willing to donate twenty-five thousand dollars for three years if we would match it. We said, yeah, we'll match it, so. So this isn't capital outlay, but in our planning department, some big numbers here that I'm proud of, the streetscape improvements, as you recall, right before I came aboard, the city did a bond program, had some streetscape money in there to improve Sixteenth Street, make it look fancier, and some of those other well-traveled areas, and about the next year, we decided to use that money to build the restrooms out at Riverside Pavilion. Kelvin puts more money back in the streetscape, so for those kind of things, obviously, that will probably have to be phased also, because again, one day, if Tech Stop finishes, the I-ten project, it's actually projects, but then we want to make all that area look very appealing to people that are coming and going on Interstate Ten, but there's still some things that we can do. Additionally, after the census, you know, we need to review our LMI areas, make sure they're still low to moderate income, or if we need to adjust that, and also, we want to begin to save some money so we can redo our master plan. All these things that we think are coming, we need to take another look at where we are going. So even though we're trying to plan out what the next year is going, we got to think five, ten years or so down the road. And then just because I know some of y'all asked, we are, we have plans on there for additional signage in the historic districts, and that is plural, so we're going to get to them all. Also, in the code enforcement, don't forget this, this isn't capital outlays in there, though. Currently, it was after, when we did the Cove School, then the next year, we just kept those funds in there, we have over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for demolitions of substandard structures in the City of Orange. Additionally, we have eighty-five thousand dollars for mowing, I think we do like a hundred and forty mows a month, something like that, I mean, that's wonderful, I mean, it is, so, you know, I think the mayor always says, let's just keep doing what we're doing, and so this isn't really new, but it's like, it's fantastic. Again, that twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine is for some miscellaneous things, but that Bureau Veritas, you may recall that, that, they do a number of things, but one, we want to reach out to them as all these subdivisions come, if we need help, they can provide building inspectors and some of those kind of things to help us with those, with those things as we move forward. So again, another big number, but it's in there, and it's things that we're doing, so be proud of those.
The demolitions, the money, that, we increased that from last year, right? What was it last year? Or is it just the same amount that you had last year, or are we increasing it?
Actually, yeah, it's the same amount, but in the current year budget, no, in this current year budget, we added twelve, the prior year, but this budget is rolled over to what we issued.
So at this point, for capital outlay and that, we're about to start talking about some employment type of stuff. Any questions of what we talked about so far? All right, you know, I kind of alluded to already, you know, I think it's going to continue to be a challenge to hire good employees. You know, a month or so ago, Jill and I are in H E B, and, you know, we're shopping, and we hear, hey, we're hiring cashiers starting at fifteen dollars an hour. I'm like, man, you know, that sounded pretty good, you know, back in the day, when I worked at a grocery store, I didn't make fifteen bucks an hour. I know times have changed, that's many years ago. But, so in this budget, what I propose is across-the-board raise for all employees at two and a half percent, that's also in the, that's the number that's in the CBAs for police and fire. So, and also, we will continue to pay a hundred percent of the employee insurance at the three thousand dollar deductible level. If an employee wants, they can buy that down to a two thousand or a one thousand. We'll also continue to pay ninety percent of the employee's dependents insurance. Now, health insurance is going to go up five point six percent. When we first started that, and again, in this era of inflation, you know, we thought we was going to be hit with eighteen, and I was thinking to myself, I said, man, if we can get out at eight, that's like a, you know, no, to me, thinking about inflation, I'm like, that's about the best we can hope for is eight percent. We got five point six. Now, dental and life are going up a little bit, but that's relatively a few dollars based on that whole, how much we're paying for insurance. So back up to that other one, what the employees paying in the ninety-ten split, that's kind of traditional, they will pay a little bit more, because their ten percent is going to be a little bit more, but still, I think this is wonderful. Also in here, I have, what I propose is to offer, now, we're going to start talking about incentives for employees, and one, simple as, if you live in the city, whether you own a home or whether you rent, you get fifty extra bucks a month. The thought being, one, if you own a home, you're paying it back in property taxes, and also whether you rent, so now your landlord is paying property taxes, but also you're shopping local. Additionally, we want to regrade some certain jobs, so basically, the more of the entry-level positions, if you will, and again, grade twenty-two, I inherited all these grade systems, so I don't know why some of these, you know, why they're called certain things, most of them, though, the lower the number, the lower the wages, so, and here's what we would like to regrade, and then I have some members follow this up, but again, the custodians, bump them up a grade, those, and you can read them here, the grade twenty-four to twenty-five, and the numbers, that's the numbers of how many people have that designation. Now here's a certain, these are more select jobs, but our drivers, like the grapple truck drivers and the vector truck drivers, I am concerned when all these, you know, construction jobs and all this expansion comes, they're just going to start snatching up some of these CDL drivers. And then again, we have a couple of other people that we recommend for regrading of their job. Our building inspector, it took us a long time to get one, I certainly don't want to lose him, but again, we see the cost to the cities. Now, again, this will be in addition to that two and a half percent, that's for everybody. Keep in mind, the police and fire, they're in the middle of a three-year CBA, which ends September thirtieth of 2024, and again, so this is that two and a half percent, that's what they're getting also. Now, in each of those collective bargaining agreements, they have incentives based on education and certifications, so the more education they have, the more certifications, the more they get incentivized, so we're not just paying them just longevity, they get longevity, City of Orange employees get longevity. But this is, if you bring something to us, something to the city, we will incentivize you to get an education or get that certification so that you will be a theory of better employee. So in this budget, we're proposing that we do something similar for the general government employees. General government employees means everybody who's not in fire or police. So in police and fire, keep in mind, like the city, I'm sorry, the administrative assistant, Mary Lowe, she's general government, the dispatchers and like the clerical folks there, general government also. So what I propose is, if you have an associate's degree that's related to one's job, you get an extra hundred bucks a month, bachelor's two, master's three. Now, a couple of things to note, it has to be from an accredited school, you're restricted to one degree, so if you got two bachelors, you got to pick one, if you graduate, if you graduate.
You can't double up on them.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I got five associate's degrees, you know, I don't, but, you know, somebody said, yeah, I got all, no, you get, pick one. If you graduate in December or May, you know, you bring in your paperwork, yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you on the incentive list. And also, you know, unlike the two collective bargaining agreements, you know, these incentives, you know, we review it every year with the budget, and if we can't afford it, you don't get it, I'm sorry, so. Also, so I will, again, has to be related to your job, so, but more specifically, I think are the certification incentives. So many jobs, and I'll throw up some examples here in just a minute, many of these jobs have certain certifications, and again, so if you have one of those, again, we will offer an incentive to get those, because again, we want our employees to improve at what they do. Now again, those certifications must be approved by the city manager and the department head, because again, literally, it went by a couple of months ago, it's like, let's talk about all these different things that one can do. And the cert pay would range from that, from a hundred to three hundred dollars a month. And again, here's some examples, and I can read all those, but I'll let you read them. And again, if the department head and the employee says, look, I found this certification, these aren't certificates, so, hey, at the end of the week, I got a certificate that I did this online class, no. You know, I'm looking at some of these, I mean, some of these have taken years for people to get, so this isn't something they can just knock out, and, but again, similarly to the education, if they complete this during the fiscal year, they would get the incentive.
I think this is also a great opportunity, because for those who may feel like, hey, I've been thinking about doing it, like, hey, here's an incentive now.
Yes, yes.
Because we also do tuition reimbursement, right?
So on education, yes, for decades.
So you can go to school for free and then get paid even more money.
I'm not going to say free, but yes, we incentivize, we have tuition assistance, Lamar Orange is offering free classes, not for everybody, but you know, there's a chance to get it. I talked to the lady, Dr. McLamore, and I said, hey, we're about to offer these educational incentives, and I said, you know, there could be somebody out there who has a lot of college hours, say, from, you know, Lamar University, but doesn't have that associate's degree yet. She's like, yeah, we'll send advisors to you, and so they could talk about what classes they may need to do, or how they kind of rearrange that to say, look, those ninety hours I have, that equals this associate's degree. And again, is it easy, is it without sacrifice? No, but that's why we want to incentivize people to go and do those. So, so one, again, just to reemphasize, the education and certificates must correlate to one's job, they must be accredited or approved by the department head and me, and again, if you have the documentation, you bring it up, boom, you give it to us. So now, if we go through this thing, and all of a sudden, it is May, and somebody says, oh, yeah, hey, I graduated two years ago, you don't get back pay, you get it when you turned it in. And again, not trying to be jerk about it, but just like, come on, you got to let us know. A couple of notes, so any employee, the general government employee is capped at four hundred fifty dollars a month between the education and certificate initiative, so if you got all these fancy things, you're capped at four fifty, and again, I'll say it again, continuation depends on availability of future funds. There are a couple of other miscellaneous adjustments, clothing allowance for a handful of people who we require them to dress a certain way when they go to public meetings, due to the rising fuel cost, a couple of adjustments in vehicle allowances, an adjustment in the police major's pay, and then also adjustment in the city secretary's salary. an adjustment in the police majors pay, and then also adjustment in the city secretary's salary. We are going to add a few personnel, and again, one might ask, well, do you want personnel or do you want some of these incentives? But I think we set up the incentives to attract the best people that we can get, and also to keep those that, that will serve the city best. So we are, are adding a new police officer, somebody else, the street drainage, and the customer utility clerk, and a couple of people there in the sewer. Now again, it's all in the budget. So at this point, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I make six dollars a day, can I get seven fifty?
If we can go to, if we can go to the.
Mayor and city council.
Yeah, we'd have to go to a charter change election.
Can I get a dollar fifty? Buy a cheeseburger? Any questions or comments, y'all?
I think it's great, I think education is a wonderful thing, I think encouraging it is a wonderful thing. I think having employees who are wonderful at what they do and educated about what they do is going to help our city and is going to help us grow.
You know, help them stay there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's the incentive, that's the.
But you know, I mean, I can sit here and preach all about this, you know, we hear that thing, well, we train them up and they leave, okay. But I mean, there are people, you know, our employees, you know, we want, we want people who live in the city, you know, there's nothing wrong with them coming to work, we incentivize that. So what if, what if at the end of ten years, all these people came to us and said, man, I got a college degree because of the city of Orange. I'll, I'll hang my hat on that any day, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Anything else? So the third part of the, the budget is the reserve fund. As y'all know, I've been saying for, since I've been here, now again, this is the reserve fund for the general fund. Chasing a lizard or something?
Yeah, there's a lizard.
Oh, he really is. So anyway, my goal for the, for the operating expenditures is fifty percent. So currently, in the twenty twenty-three operating expenditures is twenty-seven, you know, twenty-seven point seven. So that goal would be thirteen point eight. Well, currently, we have, currently we have, again, projected into the budget for next year, we're going to have a little bit more than that, about two point five million unassigned, so above that goal. But y'all remember, last year, we talked about a three-year, three-year plan to spend down the reserve. Now, you know, with inflation, and we'll get down there in a second, but you know, with that inflation, as the sales tax numbers have been a little bit better than we anticipated, so that goes into the reserve. So again, though, for the three-year plan, last year we bought a bunch of capital outlay. This year, you know, you agreed earlier in the year to, you know, think about half a million dollars towards some matching fund grants. We haven't decided what year three is going to bring, but, you know, I'm concerned about inflation. I'm talking about this, is it eight percent? I don't know, depends what it is, depends what that product is, is what the inflation is. So we have it, you know, we can be, we can be conservative of how we spend it in, in things that service the citizens.
Well, before we leave off of that, on the unassigned funds, I know the last few times that we've talked and we've spoken with Ms. Carmen Apple and with, about FEMA, things of that nature, sometimes there's been a conversation where there may not be the swift availability of funds. Like if we ever had to evacuate or do some things of that nature, would we be able to use those unassigned funds for that, just in case it happened?
We'd, you know, so prior to all that, I'd get with legal and say, okay, can we spender, spend those funds for these certain things? Because one thing, like for instance, because we know in emergencies, we all do what we gotta do, and we all, we don't care, you know, what, who lives where, Pinehurst, West Orange. I would be concerned, I guess the short answer is, we probably, we can, we may never get the money back.
Right.
So.
It's just one of those things where like if FEMA didn't have it and they weren't able to send it, if we had to use money to get people out of here.
Well, and, and I believe you've been in some of this where Judge Gauthier has concerns about if the county can basically pick up all the debris in the county. Instead of, you know, that's what they did with pass, all these different hurricanes run together. So last time they had to pick up all this debris from a hurricane, they, you know, the cities did not have to bear that burden. Well, it took on, they just got reimbursed a couple of months ago, so they were out all that money. Well now, we had no further conversation, but he was like, hey, we may not, the county may not be able to do that anymore. Well, we have some funds that we could do those kind of things, yeah.
Because last time, the, the community was very upset, because it wasn't, because it was a county-wide initiative, it took a very long time, and I remember in, in Harley, I guess, or whichever one it was, with Mr. Jim Wolfe, we went ahead and just did our stuff on our own, and it was wonderful because we knocked out the city of Orange very fast.
I remember.
So that's, those are the kind of things that I want to make sure we're prepared for in case it happens again.
Now currently, now I will say, that currently we're still going with the county. The judge has not said anything else about that the cities can't do that yet, but we can certainly visit that as we go forward.
We hope it don't happen.
Yeah, I do too. So the water and sewer fund, I'll tell you, water and sewer is not as fun to talk about as the general fund. So again, water and sewer, it's only revenue basically, and I say basically, if we have a little money in the bank, we get some interest, is from charging for services, we sell water. So if you look all the way down at the bottom, back in twenty eighteen, and most of, you know, we've seen this similar slide before, but back in the day, back in twenty eighteen, we got eighteen point two million dollars for our water. And it started to go down. And again, now, while we, we think it's going to come back up, that's because we did a couple of things. If we recall, last summer, y'all agreed to a four-year plan to increase the rates a total of ten percent. And we ended up saying three, three, two, and two. So we have another three percent increase in the, in the budget. We are not alone with this, cities across the state are having problems with their utility rates. It's that aging infrastructure, as the mayor said, some of this stuff is before World War Two, and we don't even know it. It's not like we can say, oh, we're going to have to fix this, all of a sudden James Ingram gets a call, it's like boom, and that, it just busted. So, we gotta try to increase that revenue, and prior to twenty twenty-two, the last time it was increased was twenty fourteen. So here are some proposed expenditures, again, we've kind of seen this just by numbers, but we'll get to the capital outlay here in just a second. And again, you know, sewer, so sewer cave-in, that SSO initiative with TCUQ, that's this running program that we have to be in with them, or we agree to be in with them. Sewer cave-ins and repair, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that could probably be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they could spend it all. Just can't get it, can't get enough revenue to beef up that line item. Meters and settings, two twenty, again, that could be four forty, and we can still use more. It's just, it's just never going to get there to a point where we're just like, oh yeah, we've got plenty of money. But I would say, y'all don't have plenty of money probably in y'all's business either. Sanitation fund, we are going to buy a new, lease, I'm sorry, lease a new grapple truck to replace an old one. Now, water and sewer fund reserves, not nearly as fun as the general fund reserves. So that operating reserve is two million, we do have debt reserve and unassigned, so a total of two point four. Now, operating expenditures is six point nine. If I had my wage comfort level, we'd be at three point four, but again, we're only at two. So we need to increase that, we gotta start, we gotta continue to work on that. I will, I'm not really a betting man, but I would bet as long as I'm here as city manager, every time this year, I'm going to say, we need to increase our water and sewer fund reserves.
Yep, I had a question. So, you had three grapple trucks before, one of them is now broken, and we're going to lease a new one for fifty thousand?
Now, I don't know if, is one of them broken there?
I thought you said it was fifty thousand to replace one.
No, we're, yeah, but I'd say about, I don't know if it's up or down, but no, it's time, it's just time to rotate one out. It's all, yeah, just rotate that out.
So let me ask you this, would another lease be another fifty thousand, and we can have four? Or is that just, is that how it works, or no?
Availability.
Availability. Because that's just part of our cleaning up the city initiative, and it was, it was another fifty thousand. That's not bad for a fourth grapple truck, that could be running and picking up, because I just get so sick. Like I said, if you, if you really, and I'm not trying to say this because we've done so much, because I do always say that the Lord has done this for us, God has put us in this position. But we've pretty much tackled everything that we can tackle in the last few years, and the biggest obstacle is still living and trash. Now, of course, we have water and sewer issues, but we're, we're tackling that, working on it. So if, if it was, if it was just another fifty thousand, if we could find somewhere to get a fourth truck, I'm like.
Would that mean we would have to have another driver for that fourth truck?
Then that's right, we'd have to have another driver.
And another salary.
Like I said, it was just a question.
If you want us to look at that for twenty-four, we, we could now, but again, that sanitation fund is kind of like water and sewers restricted, it's kind of tight.
I just didn't realize it was only fifty grand for to lease one, that's not too bad. Not when you can get people to leave you alone on Facebook.
Oh, they'll, they'll find something new.
They'll find something, donut shops.
Donut. So, remember, we're going to have a public hearing, you know, this is that time of year when we meet every week. And we're going to have a regular call meeting next Tuesday, it's not going to be long. But then the Tuesday, August thirtieth, so number four in a row, we're going to have a public hearing on the budget and the tax rate. So keep in mind, again, the proposed tax rate that is in the budget is point seven eight three. That is a decrease of the current rate, a point eight zero five nine, we went down. Now, one might ask or comment that, do we want to decrease that tax rate more? I would again say, look at all those subdivisions that are coming, look at all these stores and economic development and everything else that's coming, it's like, you know, we are restricted by state law how much we can, how much we can increase the tax rate. So if we can, if we continue to grow and add property value and add property revenue, the tax revenue, we will be required to squeeze that tax rate, but it takes money, it, it just takes money to provide that same level of service that we're all coming accustomed to. And so if we, if we went, I think if we continue to go too low, we can never go back up. And if you recall, a few years ago, right before I came aboard, where the council, because we knew that was coming, that cap of three and a half, and so the, the council went up with the highest tax rate that they could, knowing that they could never get back up that, that way again if they needed to. So I would say that's the same thing, let us keep what we got, and that is not the highest we could go. We could go to seven, eight, four, and a little bit of change, so it's just under, just under. But that way, as these new subdivisions, these new citizens come in, that we're able to provide them, again, those services that they come to expect from the city of Orange. But again, it is a decrease in the tax rate. So any questions, comments, concerns? Well, that's easy, if you don't have anything.
I've got a question, it's a decrease in the tax rate. And my calculations, it was, it's almost an increase of eight percent in tax. And I think your actual number, you came up with a seven point five seven increase in taxes for each home.
So what are.
It's a decrease in tax rate, but the tax rate is actually up.
Yeah, the, yes, that's what I was saying back in, the average homeowner is going to pay more money. And depending on each, so I mean, we all have, you know, eight of us, we all have eight different homes. So your house could go up, mine could go down, so it just kind of depends.
The other businesses and everything that's coming, everything's going up, so that's why.
It is, yeah, I mean, this, property values are going up.
Yes.
Well, everything is going up.
Because of the other businesses coming and all the structure, new home structure.
It allows us to, to get more money.
Yes.
To be able to continue to have the things we need for the cities.
If we want to grow our city, we have to pay for it.
Well, I bring this up every year since I've been on council, and last year I didn't because I knew the cost of living was going up, the consumer price index was going up, and y'all noticed I didn't ask that question last year. But it, it is going up, and it's harder for people to make, put food on their table.
That's true, too.
So there's, there's some point of this that we need to decide how much are we willing to go up? Because the last slide, can you back up to the last slide? It's kind of misleading, it's saying, okay, everything's going down. Well, it's not going down, the, the truth of it is, effective tax rate has gone up just a hair, seven point five seven, seven point five seven. I'm just trying to make a point, not, I'm not making an argument, I'm just.
I mean, I understand too.
But the explanation why we're paying more should be sufficient.
Well, people are struggling, and to go from a house being a hundred and five thousand to fifteen, a hundred and fifteen thousand, that's quite a bit. That's quite a bit of a jump for people with your food, the gas, and everything. Some people don't have a problem with that, but there are some people that, that may be.
We do have a failing infrastructure, we, we need to start finding money as we can, I'm not arguing that point. I just wanted to make sure the slide was correct in stating exactly how it is. I'm not trying to start an argument, it is going up.
No, the tax rate is going down.
The tax rate is going down.
The effective tax rate is going up, the actual tax, the proposed tax rate is going down.
Correct.
Right.
I will agree with that.
And they've changed, they don't call effective tax rate anymore, I forgot what they call it now. Instead it's.
No new revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, so, for instance, if we said no new revenue, which means no new revenue is coming in through sales tax. And we all know, you know, even if we just use that low number of eight percent inflation, then I would say we have less buying power than we did.
Yes.
Well, you know, you know my talk of, of last month, it was nine point seven consumer price index. And so looking at effective tax increase of seven point five seven, we're behind the curve. So it's.
Yeah.
And again, I just wanted to add on record that it, there's a little more to it than to just decrease in the tax rate.
There is, and that's what that slide earlier was saying, that the property values did go up.
Yes, the property values go up.
The average property.
Yeah, the county did that part.
The appraisal district.
Appraisal district, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, appraisal district.
Anything else?
I think the biggest, I think the, I don't remember what slide number it was, because I know you had a bunch. But I think the, the number, if that's the proposed rate, this is the proposed rate.
Yes.
It's not the final rate. If, if council or staff came back and said, we're going to do it where it ain't a dollar more than what it was last year, then you'd have to go back and look at that slide where it showed, last year it was eight fifty-three, this year it'll be nine oh six. So, you know, you're looking at like a sixty, sixty-nine dollar a year, whatever, or sixty, let's see, so forty, so fifty-three dollar a year difference, what you're looking at, so you're looking at four dollars per month.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Per the bank's account, so four dollars per month.
Let's see if I can get back.
So don't go get a soda water from the gas station.
Right.
Because that's, that's three ninety-nine, the Gatorade was three sixty-nine the other day, I was like, oh. It's one of those things where you have to, at the end of the day, that's the number that we have to mean, we have to look at and say, last year it was eight fifty-three, this year it'll be nine oh six, because that's where they're going to say, you did charge us more this year. Last year you only collected eight fifty-three.
Well, again, I will say, we did lower the tax rate.
Yes, no, no, no.
So again.
I'm just saying, but if people say, if, if somebody was to ask that question, that'd be where they would sit, right there. They're going to say, well, you collected forty, fifty-three dollars more per year.
If you're, if, yeah.
Well, see, the average home, home buyer, well, they, they very well may, but they're not sitting in here to hear.
You make it up when you sell your house, though.
Absolutely.
If you sell it.
So you're looking at four, it's like, it's like a, if, if we, if we did choose the one that we're proposing, it would be a four dollar and forty-two cents per month.
Yes.
A gallon of gas.
And I think that that is not bad when you're doing a city and adding everything and changing everything and adding on and.
I know y'all never buy beer when you're out and about, I do.
I do.
Go, go to, go to one of these local places, one Bud Light, five bucks.
Absolutely.
So, I'll tell Jill to drink one less Bud Light a month, so.
Well, so we have to have one a special call, another one on the.
Yeah, we are, we are, another, well, I'll say it's a public hearing. And again, you know, as we look to the future, we can't, we don't want to wake up in two or three years and say, oops, we should have been more prepared.
Yeah.
I, I think this is a budget where we prepare. I, I think this is a budget where we prepare, and again, we're trying to uh incentivize the, the employees to bring something to the table to service the citizens, not, I mean, there's many of them that already are. You know, one of the things that um, I think about, that in city hall, we now have signage that says, welcome to the city of Orange. So when all these people of various ilk, I don't know if I got my, did I pass that up, you know, so, if I can, so, welcome to the city of Orange, I'm almost there, we're trying to get the, here we go. So, when all these people, all these business owners are thinking, I'm moving to Orange to support Godzilla, whether that's directly or indirectly, and they say, where do I wanna live? I could live anywhere, because I got a seventy thousand dollar car, or whatever it is, and you know, I can drive, I don't mind driving, I'm in Houston, from Houston, I drive forty-five minutes every day, forty-five minute drive doesn't bother me. So, if, so they come to, to Orange, again, for a job, whether it's at Godzilla or something that supports Godzilla, and they say, where can I live, and they walking in, they're welcomed to the city of Orange, they're like, I wanna go right here. You know, the, the, the employees, again, they're not gonna meet me, they're gonna meet the utility clerks, the water and sewer guys, the streets and drainage guys. You know, that guy who's standing out there and says, stop, you know, they, why, why do I gotta stop? Like, well, you know, and, and hopefully, they're friendly and all those good things, and they're like, man, I like Orange, I wanna stay right here.
You know, Mike, with the incentives that you're proposing and all that stuff, a- all of these businesses all around, everywhere, is looking for ways to get employees and keep them, not just us, but school districts. Every, I mean, my clients that I, that are business owners, they are struggling to keep employees. Uh, look at the news, there are people, bus drivers, there's, uh, everything, they're shortage everywhere, and they're looking for ways to get people to stay. You know, so I think we're, I think we're doing the right thing.
I agree.
I think everything that's, that everybody up here and everybody around the county and then.
Especially looking ahead.
It's paying off, I think one of the biggest things, and I don't know how I'm gonna do it this year, but I wanna congratulate them. The biggest thing for this city is, you bring in, you wanna bring in new businesses, and one of the first things that they ask about is school districts.
Yes.
And I don't know if y'all saw it or not, but West Orange Park is now at a B.
Yes.
A few, a few years ago.
Yes, they were D.
Yes, I'm sure.
Yes.
So now, they are right there with everybody else that talks trash on that school district.
That's right.
So now, when they say this house is in the Cypress School District, they need to say, this house is in West Orange Park School District.
Yes.
Because they have made the grade, and that's huge for us as a city.
But they've been working hard to do that the last, yes.
Very hard for that, and those students have pushed to go from a fifty-four to a B in just a few years.
They need a big party.
Yeah, they need to go shut, we need to shut the whole city down.
But anyway, I just wanted to say that.
So anything else y'all wanna cuss or discuss?
No, sir.
I, I have a question.
Explain.
Um, on the, I, I know it shows something about the park, park area, is anything in, in the Navy addition, is that on there?
No, currently, we don't have any additional funds for, for Navy in there.
You had that project for Faragut, that was ten thousand dollars on the road. You had that project, that's in the Navy addition area. Um, you also had another one with uh, I can't remember which slide it was on, but it was on there, you had some stuff going on in Navy with Faragut. And uh, did you mention the park for Brownwood?
No, that, that's a, that's something we should be doing this, this year, waiting for that to come in, yeah.
And now, and that other stuff, that's on hold for, that we looked at with, on the, the paperwork for the Navy addition? That's on hold, or that's this year?
No, that should be.
That's this year, we're working on it.
The sidewalk at Navy?
I didn't get a chance to look at it. No, I won't have for.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Y'all getting hungry? Well, thank y'all for y'all's time, and again, so between now and whenever we adopt this, we are planning, unless something comes up, we're planning to adopt this, the first uh council meeting in August, uh, September, which I think is September the thirteenth. Somebody got the calendar, September thirteenth? So typically, we wait till the last one, but, I mean, you know, Cheryl's been working hard and all that stuff, so we wanna get this done, move on to other things, so.
It's thirteen.
Yep. All right. So thank y'all.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, yeah.
Hold on, just one second. All right, so item uh five, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Motion.
Motion, second, third, and fourth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.